... to the flag, the United States of America. And due to the vote, we wish to say, one nation, united, individual, liberty, justice, and law.
Natasha, you're first on our list.
Good afternoon. I would like to just ask for some additionals for the 2026 unit. That would be our new ambulance that's expected to arrive in April of 2026. It will then go for the manufacturer where it will get the components that I'm asking for, the additional cabinet for the CPR seat, the D tank storage, the O2 lift compartment, the backup camera, and then the additional bulkhead storage cabinet that should be added in May of 2026.
Asking for approval to add those items?
Yes, at the $6,786.
You, Natasha, I appreciate it. You showed Mike and I the ambulance out there with the oxygen, and that's definitely a needed lift, for sure. So Mike had a hard time lifting the oxygen. Would we make a motion?
I'll make a motion to give the ambulance right to go ahead.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request for the additional items for the newer ambulance that is coming, or the amount that Natasha listed, just a little over $6,000. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for keeping us safe.
Next is supposed to be Laura Wheeler on the agenda, but Teresa, you're filling in.
I am. The reason I am here for Laura, she is asking permission to collect property taxes out of the county highway garage this spring because we will not be back in the courthouse. She is asking from April 14th to May the 12th, which is the due date. So she's asking permission to do that.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'll make a motion to let her hit the access highway garage. It's just parking so much better and it's so much... I see no.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to allow collect for the collection of spring taxes here at the highway garage from April the 4th to May the 12th, 2025. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
And then also, she is requesting the credit card company that she is currently using, and I've used before in the past, is called PayGov, and they are switching their... They collect, they do e-checks where people, it doesn't cost them as bad as it would a credit card to use to pay for property taxes online. And the company is changing who they use for these e-checks. And I have, actually Laura had sent the contract or the agreement over to Jacob, and we received his blessing. But I am, she is requesting that we go ahead and be able to still use PayGov with the company that they use for the e-checks.
I'll make a motion to switch to the new company through PayGov.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to make the switch to continue to use PayGov. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Nathan?
Good evening, everybody. Sheriff, please note my report's all on one page. Just updates on the courthouse this evening. First with change orders. We've had no new change orders but we still have the handful to which I alluded two weeks ago that will be coming down the pipeline. Additionally, I do expect one more plaster-related request to be submitted in the north hallway of the main floor there, so outside of the recorder's office in particular, where the, all of the framed photos of veterans used to be on display, as they were doing some repairs, they found that it was in worse condition, probably stress from all of the boring that they had done into the plaster in the past. So that will be probably coming down the pipeline. I don't expect that to be a particularly large one, but I did want you to know. The situation has not been resolved yet, but Lumenot is in discussions with the MEP engineers regarding that emergency ASVAC issue we had. They are pushing on the engineers to push harder on the manufacturer because that is where the problem ultimately lies. And so that is an ongoing issue. So not much on change orders right now. Project finances. After the approval of the few change orders at the last board meeting, our contingency balance is now just above 196,000. The Ton and Blank side of that is still very healthy, still close to, if not above, 400,000. I have received Ton and Blank's January invoice. They had IT issues and disseminated it late, so I anticipate having both it and their February draw to submit for payment later this month, which means that we are probably reaching a critical point for cashing out at least part of the $5 million CD that we have, so that we are able to pay them. Finally, I did want to remind the commissioners that we have a current total of $60,160 in 90 cents in ineligible interest funds. This is money that we're not permitted to allocate toward the project and may only use for improvements to other county-owned facilities. Any interest accrued from the current CD will also end up in that pool of funds. So I don't know, depending on what we cash out when and if there are any penalties associated with that, we may have more to that, and that can go into whether it's Justice Center, one of the annexes EMS. Well, we don't, like I said, we don't know where that final total will be, but we'll have at least that $60,000 sum to put into other facilities.
Nathan?
Go ahead.
Is that per Indiana code that it cannot be used for the project?
Any interest that we accrue above, so there was, like, our first threshold, and then there was a second higher threshold where if any interest accrued, we could allocate that to the project. But we have, we've now exceeded that second threshold, and it has to be used for public works improvements, but it can't be in the courthouse.
Thank you.
And I put a plug in for maintenance issues at the EMS.
And Natasha and I have talked about that. It's just a matter of figuring out how much and getting bids, that sort of thing.
Right, right. That, and I know the lighting in the West Annex, Annex is horrible. So that might be something else we could look at, but both those buildings could use some extra money.
All right, finally, just some quick updates on progress. Delta 3 was able, and I did confirmation, it's a little bit further from what's in your written report, Delta 3 was able to connect the building's plumbing to the Winamack Water System today. This is the second-to-last underground utilities task, and they'll be putting the, putting Meridian Street in the parking lot back together. And eventually, Meridian Street will get paved properly so that we no longer have the weird slopes and angles on that road. MEP installations continue, including the hanging of more light fixtures, as does the cleaning and repair of the exterior block walls. We have countless boxes of lighting, plumbing fixtures in the building waiting for further installation. Painting subcontractors continue prepping and painting, as well as staining new millwork, including the service counters for the auditors, clerks, and treasurer's offices. Superintendent John Allen informed me that he expects to see the tiling of the lower-level hallway floors begin next week.
We still looking at July 4th for a completion date?
Give or take, yes. Now, I, I, July 4th, we're looking at what I'll call substantial completion, but we'll still have any final things that the architects note in their punch list walkthrough, and then getting furniture in, working with departments to get stored files back in. But as far as the substantial completion, yes, we're targeting early July.
Meridian Street paving, that was part of the bid?
Yes.
Everything, so we're hoping not to have any surprises with that.
Correct.
Anything else, Nathan?
At the moment, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Your other business, we have the executive session minutes from February the 18th, 2025. The minutes from our last meeting have not been totally complete at this point. So we'll entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes from February the 18th.
I'll make a motion to accept the February 18th executive session minutes, written?
Oh. Motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Next, we were provided the claims and payroll number five.
I'll make a motion to approve claims and payroll number five.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second to approve claims and payroll number five. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next, we have Resolution 2025, a modifying department authorized spending limit without approval. This resolution was brought to us after some departments expressed some concern with the amount of money that has, was allowed previously. The previous resolution was from 2014, so amounts had not changed since 2014. So we are recommending, the recommendation is to increase the amounts to $1,000, $2,500, depending on the department, and $7,000. Also part of the resolution will allow certain expenses per Indiana Code 3626-4.5, which allows for agencies and political subdivisions to pay for, such as license or permit fees, insurance premiums, utility payments, or utility connection charges, general grant programs where advanced funding is not prohibited, and the contracting party posts sufficient security to cover the amount advanced, maintenance or service agreements, leases or rental agreements, bond or coupon payments, payroll, state and federal taxes, and expenses that must be paid because of emergency circumstances per Indiana Code. So we're updating it and also putting the code in there, so it will be there for the future, so we know we could pay required items. When I had had people talk to me about this, I think Jenny, you had as well. But we'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-7.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-07 to modify department authorized spending limit without approval.
I will second that. Are there any discussion? Jacob, you had reviewed this as well?
If I'm mistaken, I think we added that code citation from the original draft.
Don, there's a, there's a discrepancy on our agenda. It says 2025-08, but on the resolution...
It should be 07.
Okay, well, I said it correctly.
Should be 07.
Okay.
Good job. Thank you. Effective date is March 1st, 2025. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Next, we were presented a conflict of interest for Albert John Gutwin, AJ Gutwin, who serves on the county council. He sometimes provides as a contractor or vendor for surveyor's office in the highway garage. He works with both county offices, with Gutwin bulldozing and excavating. Sometimes, on behalf of his company, he does bid on projects, projects to the county. We have a motion to accept the conflict of interest disclosure statement for Albert John Gutwin.
I'll make it.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Conference request, we were provided a conference request for the Highway Department for Gary Kruger, Dave Olds, to attend road school at Purdue University, March 18th through the 19th.
I'll make a motion to approve the conference request for Gary and Dave to attend road school at Purdue on the 18th and 19th of March.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to allow Gary and Dave to attend road school at Purdue, March 18th and 19th. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Next, we, as commissioners, have discussion on language recommendations from the APC. We had asked Jacob, our attorney, to review those and items that were discussed during the meeting. The first, the language recommendations for commercial solar fee adjustments is the first on the agenda.
Do you have that citation of that change? I know it was the one involving the $15,000 permit, but what section?
C5.
If memory serves, at our last meeting, there was discussion on the change of the current language was a $15,000 fixed fee with a 5% surcharge. The suggested amendment considers some, some adjustments to that. There's the $15,000 application fee with an additional $1,000 per megawatt per project unit, and then the cost associated with that. There would also be a 10% surcharge of the total cost of the services. And then additionally to that, the developer would pay one-time $10,000 agreement development fee to the Plaski County General Fund, and this was done with the intent that it would offset the cost of essentially administrative expenses. And the question I think that was posed last meeting was whether these fees are reasonable and if it's considered an unreasonable increase. In doing some research prior to the meeting today, just looking at surrounding counties, it's my opinion that this would be a reasonable increase, and it is very comparable to what many counties in the area charge. If it's not this, it's in the ballpark of that. One kind of test that courts look at in determining whether an increase is reasonable or unreasonable is the geograph, other municipalities and the geographic location of the, of the municipal entity at issue. So they're going to look at, you know, Plaski and surrounding counties. And so I, I think based on my review of what Jasper County, White County, Stark County does, it's in that ballpark. And so I feel comfortable saying that I believe this is a reasonable fee increase, subject to your comments or suggestions on that.
We, I'm looking at it on my phone. It's much smaller than the one you have. You could, the, the other question that was posed was the 10% surcharge. Is that reasonable as well?
Yes, and I, I am aware there are other Indiana counties that, that do have a surcharge. It's my understanding too, and I, I guess I'll have our building inspector interrupt me if I'm misstating this, but that there haven't been any objections made to that language. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe Jasper County has a similar surcharge percentage to that as well.
And then the, the other item that was talked about in its highlight, that paper thing, Jonathan, is the, or Jacob, I apologize.
Yeah, it's okay.
Is the money would go into the general as, and what was brought up was that the money would go into the general, that those individuals actually doing the work are not paid out of it.
So I guess my question would be from a fund standpoint is where are they paid out of?
Jacob, I'm paid out of the economic development income tax fund, and Gary and Dave are paid out of, whether it be at the highway or and/or other highways.
Because I think you can by motion transfer funds from the general to a particular fund like that to pay those expenses, as long as they're itemized and it's done through a motion in a public meeting. And I know that's because State Board of Accounts generally would, wants to see that in order to approve that sort of a transfer.
I appreciate you explaining that. That gave you time to look at it.
Yeah, and I just know that it's generally, if you're going to move money from the general fund to a, to an ancillary account to pay those types of expenses, as long as it's well-documented, approved through a motion, you can do that, and State Board of Accounts is going to require that.
Questions?
No.
Jacob, with this, what are our options at this time?
So as this has been submitted to you, in my mind, and Don and I had an opportunity to talk briefly about this earlier, was that you can accept the proposed language as written. You can reject it, or you can send it back with your modifications or adjustments. To that, there is a statutory process. If you are going to have an additional hearing, that requires notice and advertisement for that, without, got it somewhere in the stack of papers, but I believe that there's a 90-day turnaround from the time that it's certified by the land commission. So you're still within that timeframe to do that. So I, really, I think the discussion for the three of you is whether you wish to accept this as tendered, or if you want to make suggested changes, which you can do that if you'd like.
Repeat, we could approve this tonight. We can approve this.
Yeah, and I guess my one question, and this is just my memory, is we discussed this at the last meeting. I don't know if there was actually a motion to table this or if it was just not addressed.
Not addressed.
And it's on the agenda for tonight. Yeah, so if you guys want to make a motion to approve it, you can, or if you wish to have further discussion on that for a separate hearing. About those changes, or you're talking about the...
Staying with this, I am okay with approving this. Jacob viewed it and given...
There's the, there's the fee change.
I am okay with that. I would, we do not have a resolution, but Resolution 2025-8, okay, on this. So with, after our attorney has reviewed it, I would make a recommendation to approve language recommendation for commercial solar fee adjustment, as presented in last meeting from Carla. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2025-8 for the commercial solar fee adjustments. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next?
I think that's my copy.
Next was the UDO text amendments. Some of the items that were brought up at the last meeting were some language with 7.16A, the partial swap addition trade, as well as looking at what we have now in 7.2 and 2.3R3C with language, with the building inspector and the Plaski County Garage Superintendent.
Certainly. I remember, so at our last meeting, there was discussion about 7.16A. I think the kind of suggested language was rather than using a swap addition or trade, that it would be a partial exchange with the idea that if there's one previously approved parcel, and then there is an exchange with a new parcel, that that new parcel would have to go through the, through the process outlined under the UDO. I'm fine with that language. If, or my suggestion, I guess, it's really yours to vote on. That would address that. And then the, are you talking about the 2.3R3 at the bottom?
7, 7.6A, you're okay with the language there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And 7.2 and 2.3R3C?
Yes, and so this is the requirement of, that essentially says that any other item reasonably requested. It used to be Board of Zoning Appeals, and now is changed to the building inspector. The only caveat that I would have to that, I don't have an objection to the building inspector being designated as that individual, but if there is a statutory requirement for the BZA to make a finding, that this does not give the building inspector the ability to supersede state statutes. So I just, with that understanding, so for example, if there's a statute that requires the BZA to make a, a ruling or a certification or something like that, that would still have to happen. It does not allow, our UDO can't trump state statute and allow the building inspector to unilaterally make that decision. So I just want to clarify that.
Think the way it's written, acceptable?
I think it's acceptable because it's probably more practical, because with a lot of these projects, your, your building inspector is going to be the one handling the majority day-to-day issues that arise as to convening the BZA on a, on a regular basis. Probably not practical. But, and I don't have a problem with the language as it's tendered, I just wanted to make that clear, that if there's a statutory required action that the BZA has to take, our UDO cannot trump that or supersede that, but we still have to follow any statutory requirements. So be it. My reading of this is that it probably streamlines the process faster by having the building inspector feeding the point of contact.
How it's presented?
Yes.
Yes, please. You're the building inspector. Thank you.
First, I don't know if there is, if there's a problem.
That the resolution, when it was presented, was actually number five. So in, that's what we had used originally, so I don't know if that matters for the fee schedule, that you had made it eight.
When you say number five, but you mean the...
2025-0.
Oh. Okay. Well, yeah, I guess.
I didn't know if that was relevant or not. I...
Idle.
Okay. Okay.
If we approve it, we would go 2025 for the, excuse me, UDO. Last one was 2025.
Right.
Move up.
But it wasn't what she's talking about, right?
Right, so you've not used five and... We, we, five and six have, so Carla, thank you. So we could have you five and six.
Okay, I didn't know if that would change your vote or not.
What was, what was this document?
Well, that, it's on the letter, on the second page. And when I say I didn't know if it would change your vote, I just mean if you have to revote to approve it with a different number.
You're talking about the signature, signature page?
Yep.
Thank you. And then what was?
Schedule.
Thank you.
Leaving the schedule five.
I think just to be clear, the, the change to the UDO, that's going to be, oh, no, that's going to be in the form of an ordinance, not a resolution. But you'll just need to make sure that number lines up. They've approved it as that. I think resolution and ordinance often get kind of, they're maybe, but because it's, because it's the change to the UDO, it'd be in the form of it.
Okay. Well, they, I think I had numbers three, four, five, and maybe six, but anyway.
Are there?
It's as clear as mud to me, so go ahead.
Let's look at the UDO, right? So Jacob's had a chance to look at it, explain it. I'm fine with everything. If you are all okay with it, we still have an opportunity to approve it tonight.
Yeah, and then. You're talking about the fee.
Nope, I'm gonna stay with the.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So I would make a motion to approve the, the Plaschke County Ordinance 2025-3 Amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance of Plaschke County. Okay? So that would be my move.
And I will second it, got the easy part.
So we have a motion and a, we have a motion and a second to approve the Plaschke County Ordinance 2025-3 Amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance of Plaschke County. Are there any further questions? Big none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. All right, now, we are going to go back and amend a vote. Doing that right so far, Jacob?
Well, so you're talking about the fee, are you talking about the fee?
We're going to the fee schedule now, okay? We approved it as 2025-8, and it should be 2025-5.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve resolution 2025-5 for the new language on the fee schedule. Carla?
That replaces what we had just approved, the eight.
Correct.
Oh, second. A motion and a second. Need further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Carla, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Jacob, thank you. This evening, we have Jenny here from BS. Bringing up additional.
Ellen, I'm short, so this could be interesting. First of all, thank you for having us tonight, and also thank you for your well wishes when I was ill. This is my second week back, so I also dragged along Tim because he was here the weeks I was out. I think this was a four-week illness, so appreciate your patience with that. We want to go over some of the activity that's occurred since your last progress report two weeks ago. A lot happens in a week on these projects. And then also note for you that your next progress report will probably be three or four times the length as the first one, so heads up. We want to start with signage. You guys have a road use agreement that points to the, it's called the IMUTCD, which is a long acronym. Indiana likes those. It's the Indiana Manual of Uniform Transportation Control Devices. In short, it basically tells people what they need to do when they're using roads. Some counties have their own policies. Your road usage agreement points to that manual. So we've been digging into that as your construction activities have gotten underway with Mammoth. Just as an FYI, we've had meetings with three of the four solar companies. We're obviously jumping in on Mammoth because it's the one that's active on the ground on site. We also happened to meet with Moss Creek and Bottlebrush. May Apple, we will have a meeting with next week as a kickoff. They're probably the furthest out on the schedule, so that makes sense. But anyway, getting back to signage, we have noticed obviously on site, no signage. So that's become a hot button issue for us, for the county, as well as what we're expecting of the solar company. We have notified them that there are certain things according to this IMTCUD agreement or manual that they need to put up signage for truck entrances, truck exits on a construction site like this. To boot, your county personnel, Gary, made a decision to put out some signage where the route stops short of solar construction. Those signs have gone up. We made it clear to the solar company that signs needed to go out today. So as of 1:00, when we were there, they weren't up yet. Gary heads past the site on the way home tonight, so he's agreed to check to see what has gone up. We've obviously had email, text conversations between then and now, so. In the meantime, I've put in front of you also a site map. Your agreement on this map dates to your 2022 road usage agreement. There are certain appendix elements in that agreement that have to get executed. So we've been trying to work back and forth between the county and the solar company to get that executed, if you will. That map in front of you is the one that we plan to say to Mammoth, this is what the county agreed on, that they want. You sat in meetings with them to also work this out. This is the map that we're going to put in play. Assuming they move forward without feedback, that will also get posted to your website. We basically took the maps that Gary and Carla had and put a legend on. We'll have another title put on it. If there are any closures that result during construction that Gary asked for, or we asked for, or you all want us to ask for, that map will get updated. We'll give that to Nathan because we've set up sort of a communication protocol, protocol. Nathan puts stuff on your Facebook page and also your website. Did you want to add anything about that?
Yes, we will also be coordinating with stakeholders on those closures, on the emergency services, sheriff, as well as the, that way everyone can be, update their.
Interestingly, that 2022 map started off your road usage agreement. In the meantime, obviously, things changed with construction two years later, three years later in this case. So we have hopefully finalized that just for the south project. Central project, we're working on that. We don't want them starting stuff on central until we've executed a final map there. So they will be working that out with us as well as your highway superintendent, Gary.
So let me add on that map. That is a little bit more complex because we have another solar farm right next to it. And so it's coordinating with that, as well as more residences and more traffic in that area. So we want to ensure that those maps are practical. We're not going to be sending trucks down bus routes. We want to make it a safe for all users and keep it, all parties on the same page. So doing this practice is going to not only help Central Project, it will help the other projects in the area.
We've also advised with the county team that we meet with periodically, at this point daily, it seems, that trail cams on specific locations would be something that we would like to purchase and install. We think that that can also be expensed back to the solar companies because this is one way for us to monitor if they're using roads they should not be using. We do this in Jasper County, where we can find the developer for using roads they're not supposed to use. We know from experience, this can result in thousands of dollars. It's also the one way we can control usage. We can't be there 24/7, but those cameras can be there 24/7. And we will also have to keep our eye on that, as if they become damaged, or, you know, something happens in a windstorm event or something of that nature, we'd want to get those up and running again. But our plan is to have that feed come to us so that we can monitor them and keep the county officials as well as your highway department. We would then also send out the letter and the fines and that sort of thing.
Jenny, can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
Just on that, because I have gotten phone calls already, that we've got trucks that are on roads that are not designated roads. If someone calls in and says they're going down my road, you know, it's over, you know, over a ton or whatever, would, how do we communicate that to you so that you can go to the camera?
Yes.
And check that out? I mean, can?
We put out an email, plaskysolarcompliance@vsengineering.com. What we would love is communication that way, simply because then we have it documented, especially if someone has photo evidence, or video, or something of that nature. That's one way to contact us, and probably the ideal way, because we also want to be able to respond to those before investigating something, if we've got something in writing. That helps us document it for your progress reports as well.
So of note, the cameras we're looking at, they document any motion as well as any heat signatures that are passing it. It's primarily used by hunters looking for deer. They have it set up. So that's going to catch any trucks catching their heat signatures coming off, as well as the motion. And what that does is it sends an immediate image of that to us via email. And so then we would then be able to download that, and we'll have to siphon through if it's violation, or if it isn't. And then we move forward accordingly.
Okay, that, that's my question. So you're not going to be on there all day long checking to see, or, or.
Right, we would get notified about.
Right, so we still, so someone would still need to notify you to look at that particular time. Even though you're capturing it, you're not going to go back and just.
We plan to go back and look at the, any motions. We are in the process of hiring more individuals who will help us with that. And so when they're on site doing some inspection and they've got downtime, they'll be able to go through and confirm if that motion is valid, or if it was a, going against the agreement.
Okay.
And once you start fining for that, those companies are going to turn around and find those truck drivers and the trucking companies that they're using. That tends to decrease rather quickly, once they know we're serious about it. So that's what we want to make sure that the county's in a position of being serious about it, and being able to do something.
Thank you.
The email address that you talked about, is that on our website currently? Where is that located on?
I think it's on your social media page.
So it is on the individual page for each solar project that has all the agreements listed. It's on the building department's page, highway page, and surveyor's page. And there's also just a link along with all those menu items for the individual solar pages that just says VS Engineering Contact.
So through that email, oops, go ahead, sorry.
Can't write a ticket and just say, hey, there's a contract violation. There would have to be some body of law that would give him the authority to do that, which would generally be done in the form of an ordinance, which I think is a thousand dollars per violation.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Absolutely. Right. What has been your process in past experience?
Yeah, we usually get, so in the case of Jasper County, Jacob's at, we get notified by the county. They get downloaded photographs on those trail cams. We've done 18 fine letters, or 18 citations over three weeks of time on the.
So do you write, does VS write those?
So we issue a notice of breach of contract, and in that notice of breach, it is issuing the fine that is payable to the county, and it gives a timeframe that that is, needs to be done. Now, of note, we have not received any notices from law enforcement, but I, correct me if I'm wrong, Jacob, but I think receiving that would be appropriate to use as documentation in a fee of someone going outside of.
Yes, but. Yeah, yes, and actually, I did something similar to this with Biotown in Benton County. And it's, the issue is, what you're talking about is a civil breach of contract, and there's still a, a civil action there for the fines, and that they're liable for it. I think what Sheriff's concern is, is he has no legal standing.
Yeah.
To write a ticket because it's not a violation of the state statutes or anything else. But if somebody's violating the Frost Law or something like that, well, you can enforce that because you've got an ordinance on it. So my suggestion would be, if you want some extra teeth to this, you can certainly take the breach of contract avenue, but if you want it, law enforcement's assistance, you're going to have to have some sort of an ordinance for them to have any teeth to be able to do.
You write something like that for Biotown?
Yes, I did.
Is that like driving the school bus? There's an ordinance with the up light out. If somebody goes by the stoplight, they call the sheriff. Is that the same?
Well, I think the idea is, I mean, because they're law enforcement, they have to be able to point to a law that they're enforcing.
Well, see, this is on a camera.
Yes. If you have both, they can cite, cite.
I would.
It's kind of a belt and suspenders approach.
I would be in favor of Jacob writing us ordinance as behalf.
I can do that. And I'll probably have Sheriff look at it too, to make sure that it's practical.
Would there need to be proper markings on roads, or would this use app, this map, conversation with VS appropriate?
I, I think in the ordinance that I did before, it was similar like with a road use agreement where we had an exhibit with the designated routes in it. I don't have the statute in front of me, but my memory is because there is a fine or a financial penalty, it would have to be advertised. The ordinance would have to be.
I think too, that in that ordinance, you want to reference all county road use agreements because there's going to be other roads affected projects. Every one of them's going to have a different map. And certainly, we can add the maps as addendums to that ordinance, but if you keep it general enough that it, they.
You don't have to reinvent the wheel 10 times.
Yes, and then we can keep getting the maps to the sheriff so that he knows. Yep.
Thank you, Chris. Bill writes, I appreciate it. Thank you. So you'll have something for us?
Yeah, I'll, I'll prepare something and circulate it for the three of you, and Sheriff, and Highway, and everybody can weigh in on it.
Very good.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead. Okay, sorry. Great to get off track with that, though. So also, we've been looking at road issues, whether it's a deficiency, a repair, something going wrong. Your road usage agreement has, gives Gary some options, whether he wants to take care of that, or he. whether he wants to take care of that or he wants the developer to take care of that. Gary's position on this is this is their construction project. They need to make these repairs, et cetera. Now, there's a 30-day period that they get to do that. And if they don't, then it falls back in the county and the county gets to make them pay for it, et cetera. So we are trying to work with them to ensure that some of this is taken care of because, you know, bottom line is, we don't want to... There's numerous repairs that are going to pop up, already have, in a very brief period of time. We don't want that to overtask Gary. So we're hoping to get something worked out where that 30-day period is continually being... If that makes sense.
I want you to repeat that a little bit. So Gary wants the developer to take care of all the repairs through the construction phases. They have 30 days to address any deficiency that appears. So if Gary calls them today, they have 30 days to fix it?
To correction. And if they do not, according to the road use agreement, Gary moves forward with a third party and invoices them for their costs.
So what happens if we've, if, if there's an issue with the road today and there's an accident on that road in seven days? Who's liable?
Solar company takes liability and is pushed on them to make repairs. That's written in the road use.
So there's no liability for the land, the solar, I mean, anybody who has their ground in solar? Are they indemnified? Because you know, if somebody has an accident and they look at, they're going to look at the solar developer and they're going to look at the landowner who signed that contract and they're going to go after everybody. So are the solar, or the landowners going to be indemnified through these contracts so that they can't sue the landowner?
Right, I think that's probably a question that Jacob has.
Well, so at the end of the day, I, I understand, I appreciate what you're saying. You know, they can sue anybody. From a legal standpoint, my understanding and reviewing the road use agreement is that the liability is specifically stated that it shifts to the company for the construction that's going on on the road. Now, the county does have a certain amount of liability in the maintenance and construction of what goes on on our roads. I, I think it would be a pretty far stretch for them to be able to go after a solar participant for something being done on the, on the road by the company when the road use agreement specifically outlines that. Now, if you kind of want to sure against that, you could, you should also, you know, you could add language to the agreement that would say something to the effect of that the company indemnifies any participants in the project as part of the, as part of the road use.
I, I, I just, I think if it doesn't hurt to put that language in there, I think I'd put it in because you gotta, gotta protect yourself anyway. And if they, you know, anybody can file a... So you're still going to have to pay an attorney. What does it hurt to put that indemnification in the contract? Or, I don't know.
Understand what you're saying and I don't disagree with you. Leave this agreement back 2022, give or take.
I think that's the most recent one that I saw.
Okay, but we can't make changes to that?
I would assume you could try to, you could try to do an amendment to it.
I'd have to look at the agreement, but my, my memory of it is, I think, I mean, because it's a contract, it would have to be mutual. They would have to agree to the amendment. Otherwise, it's not, otherwise it's not contract if you could, if that makes sense. I mean, they would have to agree to that language and I don't know what their position would be. I could...
I, I, yeah.
We're just taking the, what do the agreements say that we need to follow? County?
If the county closes the road, are they liable?
No. So if the county closes the road, they're taking it upon themselves to stop all traffic. If the road developer closes it for local traffic to go through, they take the responsibility of how the closure is set up. So if the county closes the road, they're responsible for how that closure is set up, but they're not letting anyone utilize the road.
And Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but my memory on the RUA is that in that scenario, they are also indemnifying the county.
I believe that's correct.
County could close the road, the county could close the road for public use, it's still keep it open for the solar company.
They can, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I've been, I mean, I, I've been sued by people because I represented their kid in a divorce 10 years. I mean, anybody can sue anybody. But I understand your part is even if it's a frivolous suit and even if it doesn't go anywhere, the, you know, there still are lawyers that have to be retained and paid and to, to get the thing dismissed for being frivolous, which in certain circumstances, you can recover attorney's fees for that. But yeah, so at the end of the day, if they're, if they want to sue somebody, they're, they can do it.
Right, it might just deter some of that. That's my, may deter.
Jacob, could you reach out if they're willing to add that?
Yes, and I believe that's, that's Chris Schellman with Gut Wine, right? Correct my thought.
Just two quick other things, just as FYIs for current activity. We've been working on a communication plan, reached out to like your school superintendents. We're going to get in touch with all emergency services. Everyone written in the road usage agreement that is a stakeholder for communication. Some of your employees are on that list as well, like building inspector Nathan is on that list. We have not found anything from any of the solar companies on this, but it will be their responsibility when they're doing certain activities to notify that stakeholder list. So we thought, we put it together and we get it done and we're sure that the county has, agrees that who we put onto that communication plan. There may be some folks you want on there that aren't listed in the road use agreement. Completely wrong. We should have that to you hopefully by your next meeting. And then the final thing is, I think Nathan's probably now seeing some of your economic development agreement payments. Those are coming in. I think the payments for compliance monitoring have been coming in as well. You have some excellent funds coming in through your economic development agreement. However, you all negotiated that in the past significantly. So glad to see that that's happening and that they're making those. There's plenty of surrounding circumstances where they have to make those payments on time. So we just wanted to let you know that's begun. And Nathan has been helping track that as well as us and how we invoice. So we did also, if you have any questions about invoicing or if you do in the auditor's office, please do reach out to us. We have been tracking our time per the project. When we're at a general meeting, we divvy it up among the four because they're all four active in our minds. So we just wanted to let you know that as well.
Jenny, what do you, what do you mean by significant? Hearing to other counties or other agreements?
Yes, much higher than we've seen before. So that's, that is a good thing for the county. And hopefully as those roll in, you'll, you'll be able to work out plans of how you want to use that. But it's significant enough that I think you should start thinking about long-term vision. You know, a five to 10-year sort of plan for your county, things you want to do that may come in. That's true.
Can I ask a couple other questions?
Sure.
A bond, the bond for, for when construction is complete and the roads need to be repaired. Well, and let me back up. We've, we've got roads currently that are damaged. In the road use agreement, it talks about, I don't, I don't know what the exact terminology is, but getting those roads to a point where they're not going to be ruined. I mean, this, we've got a 365-day construction. I mean, through, through the road use agreement, it says they can construct all 365 days. But we know the weather does different things. And I know other counties in their road use agreements have been very specific about when they can do the construction. So we have roads that have not been beefed up and we've got big trucks on them already and they're breaking down. I mean, already, I've been to see them. Should not they have beefed those roads up before this all started? And what are we doing about that now?
Yeah, we're trying to get them to do that work while they're under construction. If we have to, though, we take certain legal steps that we've been discussing with Jacob to make sure we're in the right course that. Because part of your EDA agreement points to an ILP permit that gets completed and that's sort of like your notice of construction. But the county doesn't necessarily use that process. So we're kind of deferring some of those issues to the attorney at this stage before we send a cease and desist or whatever the case may be.
Well, that's, that's my question. I'm concerned about other roads at this point. They've been given the green light, but they've not done what they needed to do to the roads before they ever started driving big trucks on them. So we're, so we're chasing them now? I mean, we got the cart behind the horse.
Well, I think part of it was the timing of it being winter where you can't do that type of work yet. So they're going, they're getting ready to go into a warm season or I think we're going to have a warm season supposedly.
So, okay, so in negotiations, if you're going to talk about some of these other things, would it not be, and is Gary here?
Yes.
Okay, hi, Gary. Would it not make sense to renegotiate this whole idea of 365 days a year? If we're going to destroy our roads? And, and let me just tell you why I'm asking this. I've spoken with Stark County. I spoke with their county highway road superintendent today. I asked, is the project from Mammoth completed? And she said, yes, it was completed in October. I said, have your roads been redone? And it was a long process of Pazer ratings and we're at a three and needs to be a five, but you can't go from a three to a five. You got to go all the way back to a 10, which is the best rating. I said, is it done? Have they done it yet? No. Why, why haven't the roads been redone yet? Well, Mammoth Solar is asking me to look into a grant to redo all the roads. This is the, this is the building, this is the highway superintendent that I spoke with today. They're asking, and I said, was this your idea to go after a grant? And she said, no, Mammoth asked me to look into a grant to offset the cost of repaving 16 miles of road approximately. I'm going to say approximately because she didn't have the exact figure.
I, I hope they're agreeing with me to go.
Well, that's what they're doing right now.
Those are going to be cut.
Yes, I know, and that's my concern here. So if, and, and her comment was, even if we get the grant, it's going to likely be two to three years before these roads will be redone. That's a long time.
If you're going after grant dollars for roads, you're talking about N dot or cease.
Right, so, so do we have?
Long construction schedule.
So, so Jenny, do we currently have a bond in place? Is the money there now to fix all of these roads, which will likely in Plaski County be much more than 16 miles of road?
Yeah, right now, what they would like to do is deposit funds for the current repairs into a separate account with the county. But that was intended for if the county decided, say, to fix the big gaping long hot hole on 400, for example.
Right.
That money would be available to them to do that. So they, we have to work out with Jacob, Gary, how that's going to happen. If they're going to wait 30 days and not do it, it's back on us. Now, who would try to provide them? There are a contractor who's on call, for example, which would probably be the wise thing for them because it would be less expensive than if the county decides they want to fix it a certain way and invoice it, it could be a lot more expensive.
Right.
I also believe in the agreement, there calls out bonds in there.
Is that the assurance performance bond?
So I believe there, that is in there and I believe that they've issued.
How, how can we know that for pos, how can we know that for sure? I mean, they've already started and I would like to make sure that that money is there so that we don't end up being asked to go find grants, which is taxpayer money.
Yeah.
To fix all of these roads.
It's awesome.
It's, 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 it's not good.
I've administered enough grants to know you don't.
No, no. And so again, the question is, do we want to allow them? If it's possible, possible to go back and renegotiate this whole 365 days a year, we're going to be looking and Gary, you can help me because I mean, we've talked about what the freeze and thaw and freeze and thaw is going to do. It, it's going to be, it's going to be a disaster. And I'm, you know, can we, is that something that can be considered?
I guess my question would be, while I'm having that conversation about the 365 days a year, if there is a proposed amendment or... Because what I'm anticipating, he's going to say, okay, so what, what does the county want?
Right.
And I, I guess I would need you guys to tell, think about that.
And I think there are other counties who have done this who have not said, you've got free rein 365 days a year.
Casper, has it?
Not off the top of my, I, I can look, I, without looking at it, I can't.
Not that I've seen.
I don't remember what there is.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look. But I just, I, I'm anticipating that question. So to make it, I guess, a productive conversation, I would encourage, and I don't know, you know, certainly we'd want to have the highway superintendent involved in that discussion too.
Definitely.
To make sure that it's practical to carry out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think the pushback that you're going to get, Jenny, is that they've probably got agreements set up with whoever they're going to ultimately sell their powers or whatever deadlines they've got to hit. You know, I'm sure Jacob will get in here full about that.
That's okay. So, so that's all the more reason to make sure this bond is set. I mean, we don't want to get to the end of this. When I say to the end of it, we don't want to wait until construction is completely done and be sitting here with no money in account to fix all of these roads. I mean, it's not fair for anybody who's going to be living around this to be driving on... I mean, I've, you've seen videos. I mean, they can't drive more than 10, 15 miles per hour on some of these roads. And three to four years after construction is not acceptable. Nobody in the county should have to do that. It should be done, yeah, so.
That's what we're trying to do. That's what we are reading through the agreement and trying to... We have the county's best interest in mind and all the residents. We want to make this, we want to get through this project and have the county have the best access they can. And so working with Jacob, reading through these agreements, that's what we're saying.
And you've got three that aren't online yet. So it's possible that we support those.
You mean the road use agreements for the others?
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's things popping up that we've noticed that we would like to have been written. So if there's a possibility for negotiating that, at this stage...
Can we make, can we make sure that that's all, well, never mind. Yeah, it needs to be looked at, yeah. Okay.
How often have you, since this has started, how many days have you been out in county rooms, six out here for?
Several. And we thought originally when we met with the county back in January or the end of January, that we would be doing more daily inspections when summer season rolled around, but quickly changed our minds about that. So we're parking ourselves out here. And pretty much we will be looking at it. I live close enough to you that, now, as I told Gary, he happens to live close to the current sites. On his way home, is checking something we communicated about with the signage. But it's not a problem for us to go every...
Jenny took her husband on a date to see the solar.
Bad date.
I'm going to be spending a lot of money at your, your car wash place and your restaurants, actually. And I made a trip to your grocery stores. So from an economic development standpoint, I am probably your biggest thunder at the moment.
Do you think you can get on top of this? Can you get at this point in front of this as far as beefing up these roads and all this? What's going to happen?
We're working on it, Jenny. Like, it's definitely our goal and just coming from, you know, as I told Don earlier today, I'm like, I would have liked to have been here in October. you know, as I told Don earlier today, I'm like, I would have liked to have been here in October time last year. Um, because some of this you can see coming. Um, and your agreements are different than other counties, so we're having to work through that as well. Um, but your, your employees have been very caring, um, and very thoughtful and spending a lot of time with us. And they've carried.
Some of these, the other companies, you've already started conversations with them and had meetings with them. So you're kind of getting ahead of that, those projects.
Yes, and we have told them that we believe that since this one's already got all this activity going that we want the county to benefit from that as we're approaching their projects. So kind of a heads up for seeing what the issues are going to be and we want this to get better with each project. Um, and we will continue working with Jacob and you will be free, uh, to see what we feel about some of the amendments. You don't like what something says.
Well, this one's a big one. The first one's a big one. So if you can intervene and get ahead of it, I think the county would very much appreciate that because I just, I fear that a lot of this cost is going to come back to the county. And this money that the county's supposed to get is going to be absorbed quickly just in repairs, maintenance, things that the county should not have to be responsible for. This is, we're supposed to make money here. So, yeah. Okay, I appreciate it.
Jenny, Tim, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
So at this time, we will, um, if anyone has any public comments, we ask that you please, uh, come to the mic. We ask that you speak once, state your name, your residence, and we ask that you please limit your comments to approximately two minutes. Tom?
Dumeoy, East Star City, Indiana. I come, I found something in the Cass County Commissioner's agenda that I thought was interesting and I would just like to pass it out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, John Kramer, Winnemac. Um, first off, I'd like to say, um, y'all, uh, approved the UDO and everything that was discussed in the APC meeting that he gave his blessing to, but didn't approve the, uh, moratoriums that he gave his blessing to. And you had the three options, which you could do with it same ones. Mind boggling. Um, second, you know, I used to work for the state highway. We did road closures. We did them all the way. We were in charge of an area between 49, 15 state roads. State Road Eight and State Road 16. I've done road closures by myself and with another gentleman. When we were in, working whatever road we were working on, we had the list. The list had every school, dispatch, companies. EMS, we had certain numbers that we had to call to make sure everybody was knowing that we had it closed. When we opened them back up, we, we called them back, we're open. Prompt, whenever we had emergencies on roads, we'd go out and work. With these road use, Jenny's right. Were we going to let it, let it go for seven, 30 days? I mean, good night, somebody could get hurt, killed, not good. Uh, and I agree with the sheriff. We, we should probably have an ordinance where he can make it ticketable offense. No, no doubt about it. And it's, it's just common sense. And, and back to the battery storage for right quick. Everybody here in this room, you two and everything discussing, bringing all the road use to light, just now figuring out that there's problems. We don't need to do anything until we know what we've got. There's no problem. We don't need to have battery storage moratoriums or any other moratoriums. Let's just see what we get there when we get there. So this is a prime example why we need to have moratoriums. So we don't run around like our, like our heads are cut off like a chicken. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Very welcome. For anybody who doesn't know, I'm judge in circuit court. I know that I came to commissioners and council last year, talked about the difficulties we were having with the courtroom. I want to say that John Allen has been on top of all of that. They have fixed our skylight light and it works perfectly now. It's been fixed for probably six weeks and it's, it's working really well. They've also done at no cost to the county, um, some other repairs on small things in the courtroom. And so I just want to say, I really appreciate all their help and let you guys know that they fixed all that. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Bob Berger from Winnemac, and, uh, I'd like to know, is these the same people that did Stark County? But I mean, because what we should do is maybe just let them work in a certain area. And when they get done with that area, fix them roads right there instead of letting them go through the whole county and tear all the roads up. I mean, that, that might be a, a suggestion you can do to them. And I mean, to me, that would make more sense than anything because then you don't have them clear over here or clear over there. I mean, if they're in one area, say, stay in like a mile or two mile radius, do that. And then when them roads are done, when they get done with them roads, to go somewhere else, fix them roads. That way you know if you're going to get them fixed or not, because otherwise they can go through the whole county, just like Stark County. And when they're done, then here we are, we got to fix all the roads up. And that's not the way it was supposed to be. I mean, because they were going to take all the money they gave us to fix our roads back. And so what have we got then? But I mean, this is something to think about. You know, just put them in a certain area where they got to be there and that they can't go nowhere else except in that area with the trucks. I mean, they could still go put their stuff up, but the bigger trucks hauling the dirt or whatever they're hauling, make them stay in a certain area and then when they get done with that area, fix that area. And then they can go to the next area. If they don't fix that area, don't let them go to the next area. If you have that in where they have to do that, I think that'd be a suggestion for us, for our whole county, because otherwise they'll have all of our roads. And they don't have to drive them. Once they leave, they're done, they're gone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
I'll second the motion.
If a motion is second to adjourn, those in favor say aye, aye. Those opposed? Thank you.